In Prosper ISD, we unite students, families, teachers, staff, and the larger community in the relentless pursuit of excellence. Together, we champion, we support every student's journey to excellence. Together, we cultivate, we create meaningful connections across our growing community. Together, we empower, we develop our people to lead and inspire growth. Together, we prosper. We unite in shared purpose while honoring individuality. Your collective commitment to Prosper ISD is what makes our district thrive. Thank you for choosing and supporting our schools. Mrs. Dixon, would you please pray for us this evening?
Yes, absolutely. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to serve you and to serve our district. Thank you for those here tonight and for those watching that want the very best for our children and staff. Lord, we pray for those hurting this evening. Our hearts go out to each and every person affected by the devastating floods in South Texas. We also pray for the family, friends, and fellow classmates of Aiden Wanjie. We pray they feel your love and peace that surpasses our understanding. May they feel strength in you and in community. And, Lord, give us the heart and tools to be your hands and feet to support them in the way they need it most. We pray for protection and provision for our students as they are home for the remaining supper break. We pray for our teachers and staff as they are preparing for the upcoming year. May they each be rejuvenated and excited to begin a new journey with new opportunities. And as always, we pray for our board this evening. As we address the business before us, grant us wisdom and discernment to make the best decisions for our district. And in your heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge?
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Dial, would you mind reading the board's vision this evening?
Sure. Board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Thank you, sir. Sprung that one on you. Forgot to ask you earlier. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act as outlined in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be conducted in public. However, we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions and real estate, school safety and security, and issues that require legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for public viewing at least 72 hours before the meeting. All right, we will now have some dates up in front of you. August 12th is quickly approaching. I know all the teachers know it, I know all the students know it, and absolutely all the parents know it. So, you're looking forward to that. Okay, moving on, celebrations.
Yes. Tonight, we have our Eagle Scouts who have joined us. So if you're an Eagle Scout, if you will come forward and see several of them. I don't think I have everyone. This is my favorite part where I get to put you a little bit on the spot. So number one, you're going to introduce yourself. Tell us what school you're connected to in Prosper, if you are. And then I also want, well, we'll save that last part for surprise. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Gavin Pocket, and I recently graduated from Wallack Row.
Hello, my name is Jack Skip, and I also recently graduated from Wallack Row.
My name is Patrick Horbit. I enjoyed ninth and 10th grade at Prosper High School. The next year, I'll be beginning average.
My name is Megha, and I went to Prosper High School for two years.
Very good. Okay, so here's the question, the zinger. What was the project to change the world, the community that you had?
I worked with the Prosper ISD Family Resource Center, and I made an overnight collection box for the library. So that way, anyone could borrow something from the library, could easily return it whenever it was closed after hours.
Nice. I added, sorry. Sorry, can you go ahead?
Sure. I work with the Prosper Parks and Recreation Department to install several life-saving nine-to-one signs, many community art, which is over on the intersection of First Street and Court. Along with that, I also installed some habitat boxes for local street outlets. So when the park does open, hopefully later this year, it'll be ripe with natural, uh, natural life, so be great.
I worked with a nonprofit mental health organization, and I renovated their garden for them, so that includes like garden borders. And I renovated their soil with a new peat gravel slope, and then we changed some things.
Excellent. Well, I want to say thank you to all of you. And if you don't know this, they do have to go through an interview process to be able to actually earn their Eagle Scout. That's kind of like the final step, and that can be somewhat nerve-wracking. I've had the honor to sit on that before, and I was nervous, even though I was not the person having to answer all the questions. So, I want to thank you for your leadership, your commitment to the community, and what you've given back. So, congratulations to each and every one of you. It's a true honor. Perfect. Congratulations, guys. We have new principals, and as many of you know, we are a growing district, one of the fastest in the state. So we have Sarah Anderson with us tonight. Come on up, Anderson. She is the Calhoun Early Childhood School Principal. She's entering her 20th year in public education. Her previous role was accelerated reading and math integration teacher, pre-paid teacher. Seems like a living for the role you're going into. ESL specialist, and most recently, she was serving as the assistant principal, one of the assistant principals at Calhoun and Chalkton School. She has her bachelor's degree from the University of North Texas and a master's degree from Lamarre University. Tonight, we have Sarah's sister and brother-in-law. No?
My nephew.
Yes. Nephew, come on up.
Yes, my sister.
Okay, yes. Very good. And sister. Okay, very good. Well, we're glad you're here. And I see that we have a few other employees with you.
Thank you.
Your fellow leaders.
Yep. These are both of my assistant principals, and then my former secretary slash now family opposite here with me.
You're all going to serve as support, so come on up. Takes everyone, as we know, to the leadership. Yes, it is. Congratulations. Dr. Miller, who's joining us as the Liliana Elementary Principal. Let's go ahead and put them on in the hot seat. So, Dr. Miller has over 25 years in public education, previous role, 14 years as a classroom teacher, literacy coach, assistant principal, 12 years as a principal. And tonight, we have her husband, is that correct? Very good. And then daughter's coming up. Very good. And we'll just call you boyfriend, because that's her high school. But we're very excited to have Dr. Miller joining us. She's already had such an impact on the campus. She was going to walk me down to get them. Oh, my goodness, I didn't even open there. I might have been busy with some renovations and construction, but I'll give you. So, congratulations. We're very glad that you've joined us. Is my boyfriend difficult? Yes. Sorry, Meg, you're going to never. This may determine if you stick around or not. Can't have sunburnt feet, he's got a little bit of it. Tanya Jasenoff, who is our smothering principal, come on up. Well, come on, it takes everybody. I know those words.
That's great.
Okay, introduce us to everyone, because I don't want to be like, that son.
My sister Kara.
Are you an educator?
Eighteen.
But not right now.
Not currently. I work with that.
Okay, correct. Let us know.
I'm Stacey, my parents, and then my niece Tori, my sister Tina.
I'm the younger one.
And then my kids, here in heaven, they're broken.
Yeah, I'm the older one.
Senior. It's here, it's birthday again.
Happy birthday!
That's awesome. Did you get a birthday for her?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Good. It works. Well, a little bit about Ms. Jasenoff, 26 years in public education, previous roles, nine years as a classroom coach, 17 years as an administrator, and we have her certainly here. And happy birthday again, like that's huge. And you're at Jones.
Correct.
Right? And then senior. Woo! Okay. All right. In time. Well, congratulations, we're supplies are here.
I see her.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. Next, we have the principal of Prosper High School, Mrs. Paige Trillo, who she has children in Martha's Avenue. Somebody's there. And she's a wife. Okay, so Mr. Trillo, 12 years in public education, previous roles, seven years as an art educator and coach, assistant principal for the English department at Prosper High School, most recently associate principal at Prosper High School, undergraduate studies at Indiana Westland University, where she played basketball and competed on the track team. Like, we should raise later. Oh, okay. Well, we should raise. Excellent. All right. She has a master's in educational leadership and policy studies. She's in the University of Texas at Arlington. And tonight, we have some very special guests with us. We have Ms. Sloan. Sloan, wave to everyone. Very good. Do this a lot, as your mother is a high school principal now at Prosper High School. And Trey, you want to wave to everybody? There we go. And many of you might recognize, because it's Ray Trillo, who is also an educator for us in the district. So, we're very excited to have Paige leadership, as they refer to it. So, congratulations, and thanks for all the support. I know that's already been a huge piece of what you're doing. Here we go, guys. Right over here. Perfect.
There we go.
Okay, so our business office, if you will please come forward with the Prosper ISD Business Office. So, the Prosper ISD Business Office grew quite, gosh, several years now. They've been bringing home awards, and it really started with, I guess, Dr. Penn, when he originally got here, because he received the Rising Star Award, I believe, from Tasbo, is that right? Yes. And so it's been, and just continued to domino, and then it turned into group awards. So I'm going to share a little bit about that tonight. We're very proud and recognize the Prosper ISD Business Office for their commitment to excellence, demonstrated by three financial awards they received this school year. Harry Croix and members of the business office team are here tonight. That is true. That's a true statement. The Texas Association of School Business Officials, also referred to as Tasbo in our educational world, they have received an award of merit for purchasing operations, which recognizes school districts that are committed to following professional standards in the acquisitions of goods and services. 1,200 districts in Texas and only 80 recipients. So it's pretty impressive when you think about the 80 to 1,200. And then second consecutive year for Prosper ISD to receive this award. So congratulations to every single one of you. So we have another return. No, we're staying. This is great. The Texas Association of School Business Officials, award of excellence in financial management, this is the second award that the team has received. It recognizes school districts that show professional standards, best practices, and innovation in financial management and reporting. Only 32 districts in Texas met the criteria for this award, and this is the second consecutive year for Prosper ISD to receive this award as well. But wait, there's more. The Association of School Business Officials, so this is the International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. It recognizes districts that have met the program's high standards for financial reporting and transparency. Prosper ISD received this award for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending in 2023. Participation in the Certificate of Excellence program can facilitate bond ratings and continuing bond disclosure processes, which we're a little bit busy with some bonds, so it all makes sense. So, congratulations to all of you. I know that it is like joint efforts for everybody to come together. Dr. Penn, if you'll come up and jump in with a photo with your team, I think that'd be great. They are truly the unsung heroes in the district, because we want to talk about completely working behind the scenes, but ensuring that we all have what we need and the campuses to grow. So thank you again. We also have our transportation team with us tonight, so come forward. I see we have a lot of these. I love this. We're up to that. If all two of you want to come, because it takes a team. Yes. This is a great team.
And a crew.
So, Terri Mopenga, and I think some of you have met her before, especially when she first started working in the district, and then you've worked for the school district, you definitely know this name. Tonight, she's here with her team to be recognized. The Prosper ISD Transportation Department being named one of six top transportation teams in North America. North America. Yes, thanks. This program highlights best practices in education transportation, provides a resource for other districts looking to improve their own transportation teams. And if you don't follow Terri on LinkedIn, you should, because you get a really nice bird's eye view of everything that's going on in Prosper ISD Transportation. I don't think I've ever met a director of transportation who has such a presence, but is so well-known, which has really elevated our team for leadership. Prosper ISD is the only district in Texas to receive this honor in North America. So, congratulations to every single one of you. I love coming down to the transportation facility, because you're always just an absolute joy to be around, and you can tell they really do love your job. I know when the board came down to you, to walk through your facility and learn about things that were going on in transportation, they loved their time there, and was one of the highlights of their day that they spent at our schools and departments. So congratulations, very well deserved. Also, and Dr. Penn, also.
Just stay up there. Bring it in, bring it in. Bring it in like we like each other, come on.
Here we go. One, two, three. One, two.
There you go. Congrats, y'all, congrats.
Okay, thank you all. That now brings us to a quick intermission. So if y'all would like to stay around for the rest of the meeting, we would love to have you. If not, y'all are more than welcome to ask Nick questions about his relationship, anything else y'all would like to do. Yeah, we'll give you all a couple minutes to leave. Thank you. Now, let's get back into things. We do have people, two people signed up to speak this evening, but those are on non-agenda related items, so that'll be here in just a little while. So that will take us to informational reports.
Okay, so our enrollment continues to go up. We got a new report today, so we're in at a little over 160 or so kids from last week. So it continues to go up. So any parents that are out there, if you haven't done your registration, please do it. We're strongly encouraging everyone to get that completed, so, but the numbers keep going up.
It's had a panic. I'm pretty sure Call is registered.
Okay, good. As long as y'all got it done at the web house. And then we have our Bond 2019 and Bond 2023 Construction Projects video update. Keep in mind, these are dated. It's delayed. Rutherford Ridge Lynn does not look like that anymore. We've received our certificate of occupancy, so that is good news. Everything's clean, there's seats. Mr. McGorman, I know you're going over there. There's classrooms, carpet, it's all good. All right, Dr. Penn is going to come up and do a presentation of our preliminary 25-26 budget.
All right, good evening. So tonight, we're going to walk through just a quick recap of what we discussed last meeting, and then go into a little bit greater depth. We'll talk about tax rate, revenue and expenses, and the impact to fund balance. We're going to look at the function level, which is kind of that next level down from what we looked at last month. And there'll also be the first look at the food service and debt service budgets. All three we'll revisit again at the end of August for adoption. And then we'll also talk about the next steps. A lot really happens over the next month and a half for us, and so we'll talk about what that looks like as well. I'm going to skip through some of this, because we talked about it a lot, but mostly that, that high level is just that the formula from the state is what drives our revenue, not so much the taxes, but really the way they choose to formula, set up the formula. But small adjustment on this from last time, so we, while it's not finalized, the tax rate did drop two or three cents from last time. We've gotten additional information from the state on tax compression and what they call the floor. So they look at growth of property value across the whole state, as well as our district, and obviously percentage-wise far exceed any plans for the state. And so we'll always, not always, but we're going to be at the floor for quite some time. And so that will be finalized with some information. We'll get our certified values on the 25th, and then there's kind of a process we complete through the Texas Education Agency, and they will finalize that, but that is what we anticipate being our tax rate at this time. But more to come in August. So I do want to hit this a little bit, because we did talk about it a little bit in June, but this is a lot of new things. This is from the most recent legislative session, and so I will go through briefly, because I know we're a little more in depth, less time. But these are formulas that have been changed by law, and we have to go through and interpret what that means for prosperity. So there will eventually be more tools created that will help us, but there is a large process for us to kind of figure out what this impact is. So, an allotment of $45 per student average daily attendance for basically everybody that is not a teacher or administrator, and that's, that's listed out. The basic allotment was increased by $55 a student, but that was taken away through what's a freeze on the golden pennies, which is kind of basically, I'm going to call them our TRE pennies from the past. So honestly, in the long term, that is, is less of a benefit to us than if we just kept that growth on those pennies. We saw a big shift, I think, this legislative session in the past, schools that advocated for just increasing the basic allotment. And we saw, as we'll talk about here in a moment, a movement to specific allotments to really control where the money goes, which, which has eroded some of the local control that the districts have in what to do with their funds. There is $106 per, for an allotment for basic costs, and that is per enrolled student, not your average attendance student, which is different than the way the others are calculated. And that is for some of those fixed costs. This is a new allotment for things like utilities and transportation insurance, basically some of these other costs. One, I'm going to, on the positive spin on this that I'm going to look for, is that we'll be able to show that that funding does not near cover those expenses. And so I think going forward, it may help advocate in specific areas. So we'll be able, the state will be able to collect some, collect some data on that. There is $1,000 per special education initial evaluation, which will be, this is a new thing, but this starts next school year. We'll work with Dr. Hickey's team. I know they already track that. There is additional special education funding set aside, but it will not take effect for another year. They haven't figured out exactly how they want to structure that, but there will be a shift in the way special education is funded. They have put extra funds in it, but we won't see it for years. So I think that'll be a big conversation through this next year of where that fund will go. And then also increasing the school safety allotment from $10 to $20 per student average daily attendance, and from 15,000 to 33,540 per campus. We still spend multiple times over what we receive in school funding, but they did increase that this past session. So, just a reminder of what we did last time, so the state funded raises for these groups of teachers in this amount. That will effectively be a flow-through of sorts. It will come from the state, and then we will support, we will, we'll provide those to those teachers. This does cause a ripple effect on a number of other positions, especially on the career path of teachers moving into other roles, which can complicate what that looks like for them moving forward in other roles. The district did decide to provide the $2,500 increase also for teachers with one to two years of experience, and a 4% for all other staff. That came from our existing funds. That was not through those, those adjustments in the formula, but then everything else was from our local funds. And we did extend our teacher, our new teacher higher scale as well. There's some highlights that we're looking at on the revenue assumptions that we talked about last time, and again, we're looking at a $45 million increase on the revenue side from the current year. You're seeing most of that gain right now on the state revenue side and very little in the taxes. That is due to increased tax compression a little bit, but probably more so the increased homestead exemptions, which are lowering the values of the homes that are, the taxable values of the homes. We will, I could see this moving a lot as we get more information from our appraisal districts on the impact of the homestead exemptions. We have, remember, some homes in Denton County and some homes in Collin County, we get appraisal, we'll get values from both counties. we'll get values from both counties, and they are, just like we are, navigating this change in legislation. What does that look like for them? And so they're working quickly to navigate those, in addition to process all of the appeals, property value appeals that they have by the certified value date. They don't have to meet it 100%, they have to be within 10, I think most of them will be within 5% of working through those protests. So a lot of moving parts for us and the other entities we work with, and so that's really what we're navigating. So I do anticipate that potentially moving a little bit, but probably pretty close to a heavy increase on the state side and not very much on the tax side. But really, again, that is driven by our increase in students. That's where the funding comes from in all these formulas we're talking about. And then the taxes in the state are just how they pay that formula. Just a graph for you, to not be so number-heavy for you, but showing just about half, about half predicted state revenue and the rest in the taxes. A little bit of local revenue, but not very much. Currently looking at about 550 positions. We are really working through that over the next month and a half and really reviewing those. I don't know, I'm anticipating that number dropping a little bit by the time we actually adopt, just seeing, as we get closer through the hiring season, that's kind of our average cost. A lot of the expenses, as I dive in here in a minute on the functions, you're going to, I'm going to sound like a broken record a little bit, but it's from opening four campuses and what that means. There's a lot of ripple effects that come from that. We'll see a lot of these programs and costs. The recapture payment, that's another number that can move as we see what the number of students, the homestead exemption impact, and what the hold harmless looks like, so that number as well can move before August. So high-level expenses are at $431 million, you see the split there from the payroll budget and the non-payroll budget there. And then here is where we kind of shift gears into what we did not cover last time. So this is in the function, so these numbers total up to what we just saw, but I wanted to show you kind of the difference at function level. So the function level is what the board approves, and this is going to include the personnel under each function as well as any non-personnel costs. And remember, we've got, I think I just showed on the last slide, 80% of the cost is personnel, and that trend runs through most of these increases as well. The bulk of it is personnel with a few supporting things, but most of it is supporting the new campus. So of the 68 million increase, 40 million of it is in instruction, which is what you would expect. And so that is teachers and staff in the classroom or materials that are directly in the classroom. That's where the bulk of the increase is, as you would expect, and we'll see that throughout. And then most of those other increases are supporting those campuses. So 12 is your librarians, your library aides, materials and libraries, and then supporting staff and supporting our teachers and supporting on the curriculum and the school leadership and those, through those office staff for the new campuses, that's primarily driving all of those increases. There's nothing exceptional there outside of the needs to open the campuses. When we go into the instructional-related costs, so these are not necessarily campus costs, but basically to make the school run, everything that you'll see. So function 31, that one with the increase, that is our counselors for our new campuses. We have definitely on the secondary campuses, you've got more of those things, but also dyags and psychologists and any of those that support the extra students that will attend those. And then the other gain you'll see on the co-curricular, extracurricular, especially when you open secondary campuses and especially when you open a high school, that's everything from UIL academics, fine arts, athletics, any kind of extracurriculars that support those secondary schools, and the staffing and the materials that go with that is in that section. Obviously, running more buses and routes and fuel and all the things there, nurses and the health services, things like that. When we get into the, just kind of more operational costs here, functions 41 to 53, a lot of the 41 positions, while a small dollar amount, that is really supporting our staff, so additional help in risk and workers' comp, position control benefits, just when you see all the teams up here, you know, those are small, that wasn't 10% of our transportation department. We have a lot of people, 4,000 something employees, and so we need the staff to be able to support them in all these areas. 51, our maintenance and utilities, again, the bulk of this is new campuses, so about 3.5 million of that is going to the utilities of those campuses. About over 5 million is for contracted services like grounds, custodial, things like that, so the vast majority of that is just tied to just physically opening the campus. 52, you'll see a little increase in there beyond new officers. Two years ago, we'd picked up a safety school grant that the state had offered, they did it for two years in a row, we were funded by the grant. I believe that that was kind of a stopgap until they were able to change the formula this past year, and so I think that's why we've seen the increase in the school safety formula and then the grant going away. And so that's kind of what we've seen. And so we had about 13 staff members that were funded by the grant the past two years that had to come back to the local general fund. And then data processing, so technology primarily, some staff to support students, but a lot of our licensing, so all of the softwares that we use, instructional, but also managing staff and students, so for every student that needs a license and every staff member needs a license for all of the things we use, that drives up every year and will continue to as long as we keep adding on that side. And then just kind of some of these other costs here, you know, our debt service, this is not our bond payments, we'll talk about debt service, I mean, this is just things through local fund, primarily leases, so the physical space that we lease, things like copiers and printers that we have on leases will be there. And then in your 90s, the functions in the 90s, that is our district, our recapture cost, our appraisal cost, and our payments to the tax office. And again, all of those can change as the tax levy changes. So as the values get ironed out and then the tax levy changes, then what we, in fact, we got an email today from one of them that that budget with them can change. And this is only complicated even more by the fact that we started our next legislative session today, and additional property tax relief is on that call. So we'll just, I don't know exactly what that's going to be. We're just going to be along for the ride on that one, I guess. So that's a kind of a quick rundown of the high levels of those functions. Again, I don't think there's anything extraordinary beyond just supporting of the, batting of the four campuses and the students that are coming. So this is broken down, a percentage on all that, again, 64% in those instructional areas, which we would continue to expect. This is taking the same dollar amount and then by function splitting it up by area, so you're seeing, you know, how much is going to salaries and personnel specifically, service and utilities, obviously a significant amount, and then supplies and other operating, you know, so much of those service and utilities are just, there's hard costs that we can't really do much about, unfortunately. With that, going into food service, so the food service budget has just kind of got a small increase from last year. You know, this always fluctuates on participation, and so we will see kind of how that goes. The main thing that we really watch on this is we want this program to support itself. We don't ever want to have to prop it up with general fund money and the food service team, RONCA, and then our partnership has been really well, and we've been pleased with the work they do and come in well financially. So if the revenue ever, if the expenses are exceeding it, it's because we've got it on the revenue side as well, and we amend it. Past years, we've had to, this year we won't, but that's our food service budget. Our debt service budget, this is again paying off the bonds that we've sold to build all the facilities at the rapid pace that we are. This is the first look, and the reason I say that is because while the other is very formula-driven and kind of will go up and down from the state and local depending on the levy, this is very heavily on our tax levy, although there is some hold harmless, and that is, while in the past has not been much of a factor for us, as they continue to increase the homestead exemption, that is becoming more of a thing that we watch. And we work closely with Doug Witt, our financial advisor that y'all have all spent time with. That's a really ongoing, heavy ongoing conversation that we have with him. And so I think what we'll see over the next, between here and next month, this should be pretty close, but the things that we're going to watch are the tax, the homestead exemptions and hold harmless as they iron out what that looks like. That can move the revenue side one way or the other just a little bit. And then getting some additional details. So we sold bonds that we received the funds for in July, but we also, if you remember, we were doing a remarketing to reset the interest rate on one of them, and that sale was Monday of last week, I believe. And so while we don't have all the closing numbers, but that should bring the expense side, hopefully, that should, it will bring the expense side down a little bit. So we're waiting on some final numbers, but it's going to be pretty close to that, but I wanted you to have a look at kind of about where we were looking at. Again, we'll know more heading into August for that. And then finally, the next steps, you know, the things that I would say I've added here beyond the normal thing of just watching the enrollment numbers and special programs for revenue and looking at vacancies. We've got, we'll continue to receive information from the legislative session that's completed, but then we've also obviously started the upcoming special session today. And so I'm, I shouldn't say hopefully, I would love for whatever they do there to not impact us this year, but I don't know, I don't know, I don't know how that'll happen. One other thing that we're monitoring is that Department of Education, you may have heard about this, has done a federal funding freeze on the title programs. And while we're not a heavy receiver of that, we do have some staff members that are funded by that. And if that were to not come through at some point, we would have to move them over to our general fund. I, my understanding is that will have to come through. The act to actually stop it would be a pretty big lift. I'm hoping this is just a temporary, temporary hold. So I am anticipating that coming through, but it is something we're going to keep an eye on. Again, we'll get our values hopefully by the end of the week, and then we'll take some of that to then get our confirmed tax rate, and then we'll post it all in the newspaper like we're supposed to, and then we'll show up here in early August and adopt all those things. We're already doing a lot of work looking into '26 and '27 with school openings, and '27, '28 gives me heartburn to think that they're going to go back in session again. So with that, that is what I have. I do want to do, again, thank particularly Kerry Crowe and Ashley Lopez on the budget and finance team, HR team, and really the leadership as a whole. Like to get this is a lot of people working together on their non-personnel and their staffing and our leadership team. Dr. Ferguson's facilitated a lot of great work and great conversations with them, and everybody knows the challenges that we're facing, and I think everybody's really buying into work to do what we need to do. And so I'm just thankful for all their work with that. You know, it's kind of, that's a lot of information, but I was trying to make it, get through it, but any questions on any of that? I know you've had time to see it, and we tried to give you some notes on things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Penn.
All right, that will bring us to item seven, our consent agenda this evening. Everybody's seen that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion on the consent?
Yes, you need to abstain from item 8B for professional reasons.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Anything else from anyone? Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor. That is all seven of us, none opposed. Consent agenda passes. That takes us to action item eight, consideration of possible action regarding additional employee payments resolution. Let's see here. Dr. Ferguson, anything you want to throw out there on this one?
I think just always looking for innovative and creative ways to better take care of our employees. Y'all do an excellent job, I think, even with what Dr. Penn was talking about. You all could have ultimately made the decision, we'll only do what the state brings us, and you all said every single one of our employees matters and is deserving of that raise, and I know that that's not the scenario in many of the districts around us. They did not make that heroic lift for employees, so I want to say thank you for that. But if you'll remember to, one of the budget amendments we had a couple of meetings ago was really for recruitment and retention and looking at different ways that you all as a board can support. So this just gives you the ability to be able to access that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and have a motion on this, and then we can have discussion if we need to here in just a moment. So on 8A, can I please have a motion?
I got it. I move that the board approve the resolution regarding additional employee payments.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Any discussion on this? Comments? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor. That is all seven of us, none opposed. So 8A passes. 8B, consideration of possible action regarding resolution for school closure due to weather or other emergencies.
Yes, this is in the event that we get in bad weather and our employees cannot come to work, we would still want them paid, obviously, because it's not their fault they can't get here. And so this covers us on any of those bad weather days that wouldn't allow them to be able to travel to their positions, but not miss payments or part of their paycheck.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Ferguson. I think that was pretty straightforward. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Move the board approve the resolution for school closures due to weather or other emergencies.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Any discussion on this, on 8B? Hearing none, all in favor. That is all seven of us, none opposed. Takes us to 8C, consideration of possible action regarding changes to board policy based on legislative updates. We had a few of them this year.
Yes, so there's three currently that need to have action taken on them, one of them being the cell phone bill, which that includes smartwatches, really any cellular device, communication device. The recommendation by administration is, is that obviously we follow what the bill said and that we have those restricted from our students, and that means the hallways, that means the cafeteria, out of sight, out of mind. I have had several parents email me, I think, really concerned about the safety piece, that in the event of something major happening, would they be able to get in contact with their kids? And so we want them to be able to access them, just not have them as, utilize them within that instructional setting, so they will be out of sight, out of mind, but accessible by kids in the event of an emergency, if needed. And there'll be information going out to the parents to explain. Yes, and the board recap, but we'll give a little more details, because we know there are certain students that don't just access their technology for texting and different mechanisms, some of them use that for health support. And so we'll certainly make that available and work through each of those concerns at the campus level. Really, our elementary and middle schools were pretty well done with cell phones. High school, really hallways and cafeterias is where you saw them the most, so a little more of a shift, right, once again, but we'll work through any of those requests and certainly have parents reach out to their campus administrators to work through those things. We didn't feel like it was the best usage of funds to go after the pouches, plus that was the concern on the parents, because if the kids' phones were locked away in a pouch and something happened, parents wanted them to be able to get to them, and I have a feeling on the heels of what Dr. Penn said, with the 90th legislative session looming, in the next two years, we probably have a bunch of pouches sitting around, because I have a feeling this may be one that goes away, that we don't need pouches anymore. So, just a guess, not that I have a crystal ball.
Maybe cell phones is the thing that will get people to finally vote.
Maybe, maybe. We'll see. The other one is homeschool, allowing homeschool students to come in to participate in extracurriculars. Our recommendation is that we do not allow that, and that really has everything to do with just our immense growth. We might be recommending something different if we weren't growing at the rate that we are, but as you know, what we don't want is that we have students coming in and then we're cutting students from teams and opportunities that are actually here every single day. So that is our recommendation on that one. And then we have also, so cell phones, homeschool students, and I am forgetting, oh, libraries. So we have the library committee, and so what we're going to recommend is that you all put together the library committee, and then we'll bring that back in August with those specific names for the committee to provide to the public. And then we'll be working with our library services and teaching and learning department as those requests come through.
Okay, let's go ahead and get the motion on this, and we can have discussion if there's any to have. Is there a motion for 8C?
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve changes to board policy based on legislative updates as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Okay, Dr. Ferguson just gave us this explanation. I know on the cell phones, there's going to be a lot of questions out there. Parents, hey, there's going to be hot sports opinions by your kids on this stuff. I encourage y'all to go ahead and start having the conversation with them now, and hey, this is, I think that this is a big part of what the legislative, what they wanted to do this past time was empower parents more on that, and I know that we've certainly heard this from parents. So this is that in action, so we'll go ahead and take the action right now and go from there. Any other thoughts or comments, discussion to be had? All right, hearing none, all in favor. That is all seven of us, none opposed, so 8C passes. 8D, consideration of possible action regarding prosperity, board trustees, board operating procedures.
The only change in the board operating procedures is by September 1 legislative session changes that we move away from the 72 hours of a posting of an open meeting to three business days, so that's the only shift within those board operating procedures, and those are out public view, for the public to look through.
Yeah, so public will have much more time going into it this year, it'll just stop the Friday before on stuff, so. the Friday before on stuff. So be looking for that change. We'll do that one for September, though, correct? All right. Okay, so with 8D, is there a motion?
I move that the board approve updates to the Board of Trustees Board Operating Procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor. It's all seven of us. 8D passes. That will bring us to number nine, public comment on non-agenda related items. All right, we have two people signed up to speak here this evening. I will go over a couple general rules that we have and then turn the floor over to y'all. Each person, if I can find my... Each person is going to have three minutes to speak. We ask that you not identify students or community members or staff members by name, but we will give you the three minutes. And then, once it's done, we'll ask you to return to your seat. But first up this evening, we have Mr. Story. Evening, sir.
Good evening, Board. Appreciate you giving me this opportunity to allow me to address you. I'm currently an elected director of Elm Ridge Water Control District. It's a water district in Denton County, incorporating the communities of Artesia, Savannah, and Arrow Brook. But I should say I'm here in my personal capacity tonight as a concerned citizen. Artesia consists of 1,686 homes. It resides in the boundaries of Prosper ISD. These homes pay a conservative average tax of approximately $3,000 per house. I was way a conservative. That totals more than $5 million to my estimate. Artesia has been in existence since approximately 2006, well before Richland High School began construction. Elm Ridge has proven that we've been a willing and good neighbor to both Prosper and Prosper ISD and in the best interest of our mutual constituents. In 2019, when Prosper ISD needed a sewer easement through the middle of Artesia's green belt to facilitate construction for Rushing Middle School, Elm Ridge agreed without cost. In 2019, again, when Prosper and Prosper ISD asked to make Harper Road behind Rushing Middle School private, Elm Ridge again agreed in the interests of public safety. Recently, Elm Ridge has offered to pay $100,000 for a permanent traffic light outside of the Artesia community, and that was refused by the city of Prosper, to my understanding. We also voted to pay 60 days' worth of crossing guards to help with the flow of kids into the new school. We do these things not in the interest of, excuse me, we do these things in the interest of being a good neighbor, though neither of these items fall to Elm Ridge itself. Getting childrens to school safely is a concern we should all get behind. John F. Kennedy has quoted in an October 1963 speech, "We can say with some assurance that although children may be the victims of fate, they will not be the victims of neglect." Tonight, I come here to ask Prosper ISD to give Artesia residents some assurance that their students will not be the victims of neglect on the way to school this fall. Thank you.
Conservative, conservative, very conservative, Brandon.
Next, we have Mr. Holden.
I used process of elimination to assume I was the next person coming up. All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Tim Holden. I'm a resident of Artesia and a proud parent of three Prosper ISD kids. We live in the Artesia neighborhood, and as Brandon just told you, it's the neighborhood directly across from this new Richland High School, a school that we're all proud of, just as we were proud of Walnut Grove opening last year. We're proud of our district and we're proud of this new school opening. I'm here as a concerned parent. One of my kids is gonna be walking to that new school in just a few weeks. And we're, all of our families in our community, as I said, are excited about Richland opening, but we're deeply concerned about safety. If you're familiar with the location, Artesia Boulevard is directly across from the entrance to Richland High School. There's not gonna be crossing guards, there's not going to be a crosswalk, and there will not be a light there. Instead, we're expecting several hundred high school students, that last time I checked are all teenagers, to walk half a mile down Fish Trap, turn at Fish Trap and Teal, continue that path, and then turn into the school. Twice a day, roughly 200 high school students that are never gonna think about just running across the street. This is not a safe or realistic solution. I understand that planning infrastructure takes time, but we've known this high school was coming for years, and this community has been there for nearly 20 years. The reality is, we're about to open a school without a basic safety plan. The responsibility for this doesn't just fall on the city or the county. The school district is also a key player in this. When we build schools, we also need to build safe access to those schools, because otherwise we're creating avoidable risks for the most precious things that we all care about. We can't fix it all by August 12th, and I don't expect us to. But we can commit to doing our part of a shared solution. So whether that's funding part of the traffic signal, securing a crossing guard for now, or actively collaborating with the city and the county, we need to have a safe plan. I'm not here to point fingers. I'm here to ask, what can Prosper ISD do now to make sure no child has to risk their safety just to walk to school? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ferguson, do you have anything?
Yes, so actually, back in 2023, the Town of Prosper started working with Elm Ridge on this very issue. So it's certainly something that we've spent quite a bit of time working on. I've obviously been brought into the conversation and then some of our other personnel. And so I will say that without certainty, because I don't wanna go into a lot of details, but there has been a lot of collaboration by all three entities, because we all have the same goal in mind, which is what you brought up, Mr. Holden, is that we want our kids to be able to safely get across the street, to be able to access the school. And we do realize that coming out of that Elm Ridge Water District in Artesia, that we'll have hundreds of kids that will be trying to get across that street. And certainly, no, I, to speak to the Town of Prosper, I feel like they have gone above and beyond with what they've tried to do to collaborate, to make this happen. I can't say that we could take full advantage. We certainly, anything that we can do, we've been a part of. But really, the starting point of all of this was the Town of Prosper, starting that communication several years ago with the Elm Ridge Water District to ensure that we have. But I will tell you this, we are getting a little bit closer to nailing down some specifics. So please know that it's not going to be the 12th, and there's no plan, or that we haven't been working, because we have been working trying to ensure safety for the kids.
Okay, that now brings us to a close, oh, sorry, Dr. Ferguson.
Yes, Superintendent reports, so new hire orientation, I think we have one more left this year, to onboard our new employees. It's really exciting to be able to be in that room and that space with them. They're excited about coming to Prosper ISD. So we get to talk to them about growth, but we also get to talk to them about what makes Prosper so special and why probably they made the choice to come our way. Ms. Hunt does an outstanding job of really bringing the energy and making it fun. But we really have flipped our onboarding process so that our employees are coming in and it's not as cumbersome as it once was. And then certainly being able to use our community room as a place that we really get to show off our facilities. And then Back to School Leadership Academy, bringing all of our leaders together. I wanna say a huge applause to all of our leaders in Prosper ISD. This was several days of really intense work, thinking about legislative changes, but then all of the things, RTI, everything that goes into the school year. And the fact that they have smiles on their face, that's really impressive. But I wanna say a shout out to not only Mrs. Cockrell, but also to Dr. Gray. Dr. Gray did a great job, she and her team that are here tonight, but really facilitating, giving time and space every time there was a topic. Let's stop, let's collaborate, let's talk about this with our team and how will this be implemented, or things that we have as thoughts. And I think it was really nicely done. Our administrators truly appreciated that time and space to be able to talk to their own team. And I know on their end, they had a ton to do, and so they would have loved to have had every single minute of collaboration. But they took a step back and really leaned in to our people and how to champion them and empower them to really cultivate the absolute best that we can in Prosper ISD. And then new assistant principal training. We have about 25 new assistant principals across the district that's through ads or replacements, because as you know, we had some assistant principals that came, became principals in our great growing district. But really leaning in and to give them the support that they need to really set them up for success and be able to ask all the hard questions. Mr. Dave Velasco, Dr. Penn's team with technology, I was able to sit down and kind of watch all the tips and tricks that go on with Skyward, which is our student information system, and how do we enter things, how do we do things, which I will tell you, that's probably one of the biggest hiccups for administrators when they come in, is what do I do with this Skyward thing if they haven't used it before? So I was really glad to be able to see that. But then also that reinforcement of what we believe in Prosper ISD and how we take care of our people and really foster the culture. And that is key with the assistant principals, because they're definitely dealing with some of the heavier topics sometimes on campus.
Okay, now we will go into closed session. We will now recess into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 071, 072, 074, and 076. Thank y'all so much for joining us this evening. Okay, the time is 9:07, and we are back from closed session. Let's see here, we have 16A, consideration possible action regarding hiring of contract personnel. May I have a motion?
I make a motion. I move that the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. That is all seven of us, none opposed, motion passes. That brings us to the close of the meeting. The time is now still 9:07. Good night.